Oh, nice. You all.
That's you?
What's your name?
Okay, I'm gonna call a meeting to order. We're gonna go on the exec session, but I guess we're gonna open the meeting up, so let's do that. Pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag. And to the states of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think we have to have a roll call first.
Mayor Randy.
Here.
Trustee Early.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Murphy.
Here.
Trustee Valo.
Here.
As I said, welcome everyone. I'm surprised to see everybody here a half hour early. We are gonna, we have to go into, as per our agenda, going into executive session for probably half an hour to discuss employment history of a specific individual, so we...
We're on.
I'd like, we didn't do, I'd like to make a motion about an executive session. Okay, welcome everyone. Don't really know what to do with all these people in the room, but we'll try to deal with it. We just came out of executive session, and so we're getting into our regular agenda tonight. First up is police report.
Good evening, everybody. For the month of October, we had eighty-two calls for service, giving us a total number for the year of seven oh five. We had fifty-one moving violations. We had a hundred and sixteen parking tickets. So for the total for the month, it was a hundred and sixty-seven parking and moving violations, and for the year is twelve hundred and sixty-eight. No arrests for the month. And a couple of quick points I would like to bring out. The Halloween parade went off tremendously. We had a good time. I had no complaints except for one. An email came, well actually an email came in, but a phone call came in about a few intoxicated individuals that had kinda came into the end of the parade, after the parade had gone down to the bandstand. As the kids were coming back, there was a few people that looked, seemed to be intoxicated. They did not contact any of my guys on that day. This was something afterwards, a couple of days later, that came into the village. I responded to the notification to the complainant. I did speak to them, and that was something that they observed. And they also complained to me, and also I believe to the board, that the hops on the Hudson and the parade should not be on the same day in the future. And we, I agreed, I said I would bring that to the board, the board for next year, that we would love to do something different. That was one complaint on that. With that also, with the renting out of Mayor's Park, we had all sorts of parking issues again that I'm going to try to work on with the county on putting up no parking signs back on the length of the strip all the way from Mayor's Park all the way down to Nine D, where Fair Street ends off at Nine D. Right after Mayor's Park, that becomes the county's property. That's not us. So in the past, on special occasions, we're willing to put up a temporary no parking signs there, so people can get through, especially on the weekends with the hikers and stuff like that, because emergency vehicles are having a problem getting through there on the weekends. And we are going to, in the future, rent out Mayor's Park, renting as big as that, Hops and the Hudson, the Wine Festival, stuff like that. We really need to have no parking for that, those specific weekends on that, on Fair Street. It was pretty, it was pretty crazy again. There is two other quick things I wanted to bring forth, I don't know if we're going out of order here. We needed to talk about the possibility of hiring a village prosecutor. I met, myself and the mayor met with DA Tendi. Due to the new laws taking effect in January first, that they will no longer be able to have a prosecutor come in to prosecute the misdemeanor violations of the traffic laws. Meaning if we give a desk appearance ticket for driving without a license, or suspended driver's license, normally I would give them a, whoever pulled them over would give them a ticket. They'd get a application, come to court. They'd come to court the next court date, which is usually the second Wednesday of the month. And I would fax all of the paperwork over to the DA's office, and they would come prosecute for, for the village, and before the court. With the new laws taking effect, they're going to be overwhelmed. They don't have the funds to hire any new attorneys, and for the small vehicle traffic laws and arrests, they are not going to prosecute them. So it's gonna be up to us to prosecute those arrests. Being, being a police officer, we cannot prosecute that type of offense.
What are the new laws like?
The new laws are the bail, no more bail. Also, that pretty much, almost every, I'm doing this kind of a broad sense, almost every small misdemeanor is going to be desk appearance ticket. In the old days, you would be arrested, you would come before a magistrate, and you would be arraigned. Now it's with the new laws, whatever falls under the laws, there are so many right now I couldn't, it would take me an hour to go pass all the laws that we're gonna have to deal with. Now they're giving a desk appearance ticket, and we're hoping that they come to court. So there's nothing to hold them, if I give you a ticket for driving without a license, or suspended license on five different occasions, I'm giving you a ticket, I'm running you and doing everything I'm supposed to do as a police officer, and I'm getting, and I'm doing the arrest paperwork, and I'm handing it into the court when I'm supposed to, and you're given a ticket. Normally you'd be arraigned in front of the judge. So basically what they're saying is, now with the new laws, you're gonna get a desk appearance ticket, you're gonna have to show up on your own. You know, an honest policy here before the judge. And that's why we would need to hire a prosecutor to prosecute those arrests. This, this was passed a bunch of months ago, and it's causing every municipality problems. Every municipality is having, having budget issues with it. I reached out on my own to Phillips Town. They have a prosecutor there that does this now, for a small fee that they charge to the, to the village to prosecute those small VTL, as we call them, vehicle traffic laws. That's something we have to look, look, look at, and we have to do a pretty quick one, because as of January first, they're no longer, the Bronx, the Putnam County District Attorney's no longer gonna be doing those. They'll still do the crimes, they'll still, still the larcenies, God forbid the robberies and stuff like that. It's the vehicle traffic laws that they're not gonna come over and, and do.
Can you explain a little how much time we actually need, or how many you kind of foresee us, how much time we think we'll need from someone, or how that would work?
We looked at it, and from what I, I did some investigation on it, what it looks like it's going to be, again, we do court, criminal court, the second Wednesday of every month. Our average on driving with no driver's licenses and suspended licenses was seventeen last year, and those are seventeen cases that will have to come before the judge. We're figuring on probably, minimum would be three hours every Wednesday to pay somebody to come in prosecute these. Maximum would be four hours. So anywhere between three and four hours once a month, they'd have to come in and prosecute these cases. Given an hour where they come into court, they go over the case, ask the officer who is, the arresting officer, you know, if they have any questions on that, prepare the case before the judge, and then prosecute the, the case.
I'm sorry, I'm a little dazed. What happens now?
Right, right now...
What am I missing?
Right, well, right now, every Wednesday, the Wednesdays when we have court, the Putnam County DA comes over with a list of, of cases that they have. All the arrests that we've had in the past, anybody that's gonna, has to be brought before the judge. And they come over and they have the arrest folders, and they have all the paperwork. And they will speak on behalf of the county. So now what's gonna happen is, the smaller crimes of the vehicle traffic laws, they're no longer gonna do that. So we, we're gonna have to hire somebody to do it, because a police officer cannot do that, and doesn't have a law degree to do that in front of the judge. So that's what they do now.
So he needs to be a lawyer, and somebody with some kind of law.
Correct. A, a law degree, preferably in criminal, but not mandatory, because it is a traffic, a traffic, a vehicle traffic law.
So you said there were seventeen instances in the past year?
In the past, yes, correct.
And we need somebody three to four hours a month?
One Wednesday, one Wednesday per month, correct.
For an, an average of seventeen a year, so that's about one...
Well, you can have two or three coming on one, on one Wednesday, so it wouldn't be seventeen times. They, this quarter's scheduled for one Wednesday every month, so you're figuring twelve, twelve times that they'd have, you have to have somebody come in on that Wednesday to prosecute the, the cases. If we have no, if there's no arrests for two or three months, and there's no cases coming up, you notify them, we don't need you this, this, this month. It was put over till next month. So maximum would be twelve times in the year, and minimum could be, you know, six, eight, maybe ten.
So if someone's here, like if there's only one case that they have to be here for, can that be pushed to the front, or are they just here for X amount of hours, or how does that work as far as if we're hiring somebody?
That, that is totally up to the, the judge. Usually if we have, sometimes we bring prisoners over from Putnam County that are, before the judge, he likes to get the prisoners in and out on the first case, because the other officers here, we have them in the jury box, so you wanna get them in and out. Other than that, that will be up to the, up to the judge, when he calls those cases. But I would say minimum, you're gonna get anybody, it's gonna be, if it's one case and it takes fifteen minutes, they're gonna wanna get paid for the hour, you know that, that's just, that works. There can be some more research done that we need to do, but we need to do it ASAP, because like I said, as of January first, they're no longer gonna be doing this.
Who grants the authority to this prosecutor? I mean, is he a representative of the county now?
No, he'll be a representative of the village.
Or just the village itself?
We're hot, we're hiring him or her as the prosecuting attorney for the vehicle traffic laws. Not the criminal case. Criminal case, like I said, will still be done by the... And one other thing I had mentioned in the past, I'd really like to see us kind of go forward with, is the boot removal fee. We spoke about that last, last month, fifty, it'd be a village ordinance, so fifty dollars to remove the boot if anybody is booted due to pass fines that the court imposes. And just a, one quick thing this week, as we all know, Saturday we have the Magazino event. If we can try to get a blast out on, on the village website, stuff like that, that the village is gonna be a little bit crowded as of eleven o'clock on Saturday, probably until, I'd say, two o'clock. And that's a lot, but it's not...
They're, they're advertising until three thirty.
Three thirty, okay. Then that'd be something we need to really get the, the word out to everybody in the village about that.
Yeah, I, I thought we said two hours. I thought one in the magazine.
I think they're highballing it at this point. I think with, due to, due to the weather and stuff like that, I think the, the actual performance is gonna be done very quickly. I think it's gonna start at twelve o'clock, and I'll make sure it starts on time at twelve o'clock, and it gets down to the, the bandstand and lower, lower part of the village as quickly as we can. I know we have, had a meeting with their head of security on Monday, and they're wrapping everything up, because I need to know exactly what's, what the path is gonna be, and how many acts they're gonna have, and what they, how many...
Where they're gonna stop.
Where they're gonna stop. This is all, all, I told them it has to be done no later than Thursday. No surprises, I can't have you deciding to change it Saturday morning. This all has to be done for security reasons.
I'm meeting with Magazino on Thursday, and they're going over the stops and time, so we'll know that. Larry unfortunately can't be here. Everybody was just throwing stuff on that needs to be done at the last minute this week. So that's one of them. So I just got an email today, so I'll meet with them Thursday, and go over the whole, see what's going on. How long it's gonna take when they're gonna start, how, where they're stopping, everything like that. They're having a, not a rehearsal, they're doing a walkthrough on Friday with the performers. So...
I will be here on Friday with, with the walkthrough to make sure it goes exactly where it should go.
Right. I'd like to, thanks for, and your guys, please let them know, I appreciate all the work they did this, that weekend was, was crazy. So we, we won't let that, well, can't say we won't let it happen again, but we'll do everything to prevent that. But anyway, I think you guys did a great job, as you do with the, all of our bigger events, so thank your, your guys for me, please.
And we certainly will. And like I said, both Halloween parade and Parrot Street, trick or treat went excellent. I didn't get any complaints with that. The weather broke perfectly, so they could do it real quick and then get home before the rain came, so.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, let's see. We got a bunch of people here tonight that, you know, or will rep, so I'm gonna jump a little. Well, we have recreation, we have somebody there for that, so why don't we, we can still stay in order if you'd like to go.
Well, I'm gonna have to report that the Dallas has now moved all the electrical, and we've had all the electrical bandstand in at Mayor's Park. So we're very happy that that has been completed, especially since UC Lower. We're going to be decorating the bandstand, the lights this weekend. It's at nine o'clock in the morning.
We're decorating it for Thanksgiving? Never mind.
We, we, last year worked it, we're trying to do it a little bit early, at least put the lights up, because it's very cold, and it's gonna be very cold on Saturday morning. So anybody who wants to come out and have, a lot of old people, light up the bandstand, that would be special.
What time are you doing that?
Nine. We're gonna try to start at nine. Application for use, we talked about this briefly, I think, that we were going to, thank you, trustee Murphy, you forwarded me the dark side piece, so we're gonna be working on that, so changing the ticketed events application to near the dark side application for those areas that are similar. So we'll be working on that. Then going back to the Mayor's Park application, and, well, the other applications, all the non-ticket events will streamline that, so we'll be able, more, at least come to someone who just wants to have a birthday party comes in to... Seasonal labor agreement, the commission would like to have a trustees workshop in regard to seasonal, the seasonal work that gets done, and I guess, you know, we're gonna be looking and biting into that also, so that we can discuss, how is that going? You know, is everything getting done that needs to get done? We have one commission member who is very vocal about his, his concerns, so I think it best if we just all sit down and talk about it, so that, we'll do that. The tree lighting will be December fourteenth, for the tree lighting and the Santa visit. And I think, you know, things have quite as done as far as applications. As you can see here, we still have the Putnam County Wine Festival, although they have been forward and keeping, they've used the previous agreement, but we intend that once the new application is finalized, that they'll have to go back and fill that one out, you know, and update, use that as an update of their application for the Putnam County Wine Festival. And I have to agree with Officer Burke that we would never again have, we were brought off the Halloween parade, so that we didn't want to accept applications to have anything else in one of the recreation facilities during the Halloween parade, you know, event, because it's, we agreed, we agreed as a committee, it's just, it's just the way it fell this year. So if you could schedule like that, you know, we need it next week, so if...
It'd probably be a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I'm just saying, at your convenience, because it's, that's, it's the seasonal employee, and that doesn't come up again until April. But if some time between now and maybe March, we could, you know, have a trustees workshop. That'd be great. I know you busy with a lot of things.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to hear some, some movement. Planning board? Sorry. Aaron, zoning?
Sure. Things have picked up a little bit for us. We had a workshop for forty-one Garden Street for lot coverage, that public hearing started on the seventh of November, and that is, remains open, so we can get some more information from the historic district committee board. There was a public hearing for twelve Benedict Road for November seventh, and a workshop before that was last month, and that variance was approved to allow a deck in the rear yard setback. The zoning board has sent a letter to the village board of trustees outlining our concerns with the current state of building inspections, and that was sent by email. I think each of you should have received that by now. Let's see, the twenty-one Parsonet Street property has submitted a new application to build a home there. I live across the street from that, so I'll be recusing myself from anything to do with that application. At our last meeting, we elected Donald McDonald, the acting chair of the ZBA, so that he can manage that application. Also, Grace Lowe has resigned from the board, as you know. Let's see, old business, we granted a variance for two oh seven Main Street to allow construction of a porch that's wider than allowed by code in the front yard setback. It's the original size of the porch, the historic porch that was there previously. We had at one point an application for twenty-nine Rock Street in the I-1 district for an additional residence, and that seems to have gone inactive. And finally, we've updated all of our application instructions, so I'll be getting those to Jeff this week. That's it.
Thank you. Now Phillips Town.
Good evening.
Congratulations.
Judy Carroll. Thank you. Thank you, congratulations to you, Marie and Fran. I just wanna report that the town hall has moved to Campbell Avenue temporarily, thirty-four Campbell Avenue, and renovation should begin soon on the old town hall, which we have agreed to a one-year renovation plan. Hopefully we'll finish before that year is up, but we'll be at thirty-four Campbell Avenue at least for the foreseeable future. So the town clerk is in that office, and all of the town offices, but the town court is in Cedar, on Cedar Street in the buildings, next to the Buildings Department at the American Legion Hall. The Buildings Department, of course, is still on Cedar Street, so those town functions are on Cedar Street, the American Legion Hall is the town court, and the Buildings Department's in the usual building. But the town clerk and her staff are all at thirty-four Campbell Avenue. There was a question in the last meeting I attended, I think Fran, you asked about the medication drop box, and we originally thought that that could be a thirty-four Campbell Avenue, but we understand that that site does not meet DEA requirements, so we are working with Putnam County and the sheriff's office to identify another site for the medication drop box. If people have an urgent need to drop medication off somewhere, there is a box at Putnam Valley Town Hall, and also I believe at the Beacon Police Headquarters, there is a drop box. Next week, the town is sponsoring a senior luncheon at the Recreation Center, and there is a need to pre-register, so if you haven't pre-registered and you're a senior, would like to join us at the luncheon, that's on Wednesday, November twentieth, at twelve noon. And I think that's it. Do you have any questions for...
I just think you should announce where the meetings are, because the meetings, your meetings are now being done, right?
Yes, also, the meetings, all of the town meetings are now at the Phillips Town Parks and Recreation Department, which is in Garrison at the Recreation Center. And the town board meets on the first Thursday of every month, for people that don't know, at seven thirty PM. And we are, we have had preliminary discussions on the town budget, and we hope to adopt a budget before the end of this month.
And when, did you say work is gonna start? I know they leave stuff out and stuff.
Yes, and the next week, preparatory work on the building is going to begin, there's gonna be some abatement and work done to prep it for the renovation, so in mid-November, and we're in mid-November practically, yeah, right now. It's a long month. We'll be underway.
Good luck with that project.
Thank you.
That'll be nice. Thank you. Start district review. Current applications, in October, we received review, applications for six Pauling Street, sixteen Orchard Street, fifty-nine Street, forty Pauling Avenue, nine Orchard Street, and forty-one Gardner Street. We also met with representatives from one twenty-four Main Street and resolved a longstanding issue regarding the height of their roof configuration. For our November monthly meeting on eleven thirteen, we have received a new application for review of a fence at three dash five Parsonet Street, and a workshop request from the owners of the barn at twenty-one Parsonet Street. We will also conduct a public hearing for forty-one Gardner Street. Board work projects notes that we have not yet voted to approve the application ourselves. The board submitted to the ZBA a letter in support of the application for an addition at forty-one Gardner Street. While the increased floor area exceeds the allowable, lot covered is the opinion of the board that alternative plans such as a second-story addition, it could do far more, far more to detract from the architecture, architecture of this low modest house. The addition creates a more usable, adaptable floor plan for any future residents with the mobility limitation. Two, the board is excited to see the installation of a shingled roof made from Tesla photo vaults. What is it?
Photovoltaic.
Photovoltaic tiles at twenty-one The Boulevard. We approved this as an option on their original COA, pending product availability in our market. We were informed last week that the homeowners have secured the material, and we shared our approval in writing with representatives from Tesla. While we are always a little hesitant to approve a new material without a known track record from the documentation we have reviewed, we are confident that these will be an appropriate addition to the district and a great alternative for other homeowners looking to increase energy efficiency in historic architecture. Fire company.
No report given.
Just on the fire company, another email last minute, the, we agreed to move forward with the contract for the foam injection under the floor, to support the floor in the meeting room. They had some available time this week, so asked if they could start tomorrow. And so I called the, I was in touch with the fire company, and they, they're actually gonna start on Thursday, but that project's gonna move forward starting Thursday. I will, I'll be meeting with them first thing in the morning, if you wanna, first thing in the morning, they're gonna be there, seven o'clock on Thursday. Just got that, that information at about four thirty today. The boiler project, that's been stalled, we're waiting for an update on the bids that were given. That's it for fire company. Tree advisory, nice to see you, Jen. Been a while.
Congratulations on your reelection, to the three of you who were reelected. I apologize for having been a while.
That's okay, I didn't mean it that way. After I said it, I said it.
But it has been a while. We've been very busy, but I have been, I'm sure you've read the twenty-page reports I sent you about the grant. We've been mostly working on grant projects, and I think on October tenth or something, I turned in the, the last grant report, and I always forward it to Jeff, who I'm assuming forwards it to you, but the, the latest things have been, on the grant have been mostly the Bugsy, Mr. Downey is installing pavers on Main Street, he's done, you know, maybe thirty percent or so of them, and then the rest of them will go in next spring when he can do them. And the outstanding work is tree tagging, where we're gonna be numbering with volunteer help all the trees in the village, so we can communicate with, you know, arborists and tree professionals easier, instead of saying, you know, the tree that's kind of broken in front of this house, now you can just say number seven eighty-three or whatever, which will be helpful. And the most important part of the project, which is pruning work, which we still have to write the proposal for, we're still working on that. So that was the last report for the grant update stuff that we've been doing. And then this month and last month, we've been working on a pretty large tree planting project in town, thanks to Mr. Downey and his highway crew, and a whole bunch of volunteers, and a bunch of private citizens that donated money through our campaign. We planted twenty trees in the village on two days, so we did, we did a lot of work. And they are all street trees, except one of them is in Congo Park, thank you. And I sent Fran today, probably didn't get it yet Fran, a link to the explanation of the kinds of trees, in case anyone's interested. They're mostly a mix of native and non-native, and smaller sized, so that they won't come in conflict with every little thing, you know, and we're long done with our volunteer services. The fundraiser was led by Zoe Chalikantik, I can't ever pronounce her last name, and they raised thirty, over thirty-eight hundred dollars, just through a GoFundMe campaign to plant trees. And because it was the fall, we got really good deals at a lot of the nurseries, and were able to purchase sixteen trees just with that thirty-eight hundred dollars, which is a lot of trees, actually. And Mr. Downey, his department planted fourteen of them, does that sound right? Twelve of them, and volunteers planted the other six, and I planted two little ones by myself, surreptitiously in the night. And I don't know, that's about it. I don't know if you guys have any questions from the last couple of months I haven't been here, but...
Where does the number go on the tree? Is it a tag or something?
Yeah, it's a tag. It depends on the age of the tree, but they're, they go in with a nail and a spring on the back, sometimes... back, sometimes a spring, and they'll go on, the largest circumference trees will go on the trunk, and other ones can hang on, on the branches. So if you see, if you ever walk in the Nelsonville Trails, some of those trees are tagged. You'll see a little, it'll be just like that. And then you have to keep them out from the tree, because the tree will eventually.
It's going to grow around it.
Yeah, so they'll, they'll stick out from the tree a little bit. Yeah.
Jen, we got funding back a while ago for some of the graves that are around the trees and stuff like that. Aren't we supposed to be getting plaques on those for people who donated money?
A few of them, yes. Those are outstanding.
Where are they coming?
Those are not, those are not in the works exactly yet. They were in the works last, before we won the grant. This was, these were privately donated before we got the grant money, and then they just got put on hold. So we, we still need to do that. There's only three of them, actually, that need the plaques.
Okay, but if people don't need it, don't need a fee?
Yeah, we need, we need to, thank you for reminding me about that. That's something, we'll put that on our next agenda. It's just a matter of getting them ordered. And the, the hang-up was how we were going to attach them, and I think we figured that out a couple of meetings ago, so it'll be fine.
How many people do you think were involved in the tree planting?
In the, for the volunteer day?
Yeah.
There, I, I think there was probably like thirty people there, or twenty-five, but like twenty of those people or something, eighteen were, were grade school children, which was kind of awesome. And the papers got sent, I think, a couple of the photos of the kids helping plant the trees. And some of those kids actually had lemonade stands and donated their money to help buy the trees. So it was really nice that they actually learned how to plant them a little bit. And we had several great adult volunteers, including Crystal, who's here somewhere, who brought their shovels and helped, helped on that day. So it was great. And we got a lot of positive feedback from most, most people, like they like to see planting trees. I got the easy job, so that's it.
Thank you. Jen, I call all the time with tree problems and she always has to.
I know, I didn't say the negative.
Oh, that's negative. Anyway, I appreciate all the work you do. I, you know, there's a tree that needs to come down right away, and then I contact Fran, and Jen has to go out, and then we have to organize someone to come. So it's a, it's all volunteer work, and we're lucky to have you guys. So thanks.
Thank you.
Code update.
The code update committee conducted the fifth and final public meeting on October second, two thousand nineteen. The history of the code update committee was presented along with the purpose of the CUC and a quick review of the four previous public meetings, along with the objective of the fifth public meeting. The presentation included a list of the departments and boards which had reviewed the final recommendations. The list of materials containing the CUC recommendations was presented with the links to the village website containing that information. The village code chapters were identified. Each chapter that contained CUC recommendations was listed, along with a summary of the recommended changes to each chapter. The public meeting was well-attended. Many comments were received at the meeting. The meeting was held open until October thirtieth. Subsequent to the meeting, letters and emails were received containing comments on the CUC recommendations. The CUC will meet in November to evaluate the feedback received, both at the public meeting and subsequent to the meeting. The CUC will determine how best to present their recommendations to the village board of trustees. The October conference call with NYSERTA was conducted. No issues were raised by NYSERTA. As previously reported, NYSERTA will permit an updated contract with new dates and an opportunity to move funding between the various phases, all of which will be beneficial to the village. A request for reimbursement for a, for a prior phase of the code update committee will be submitted to NYSERTA in November. There are still some invoices from the CUC consultants and legal counsel, which have not yet been received. Once received, additional requests for reimbursement will be, will be submitted to NYSERTA.
Water, wastewater. Did I miss somebody?
Chamber.
Oh, Chamber, sorry, sorry. I currently have to quit.
Good evening. We've got just a couple of things we've been working on. One is the Cold Spring Glow. We're getting a lot of volunteers for that. We were hoping to change the date. We had previously proposed that it was December fourteenth, and we'd like to move it to the twenty-first, just to give us a little more time. So we need approval from the board, and I don't know what process is on that, but I did send the clerk a note about it. Okay, all right, great. So we'll continue working on that and promoting it and getting everybody involved, and hopefully the villagers will also participate. Another thing is, that's just sort of on the back burner, but village decorations for the holidays are something that the Chamber has donated funds for in the past and had fundraisers for. It's a little bit late in the game, I imagine, just hearing Ruth Ann talking about they're already starting the decorations, but if it's something that would be helpful, we do have a couple businesses on Main Street that want to donate to get more wreaths or laurels that go across, or something like that. So I'm just sort of throwing it out there to you, and we can talk about it later, but it's something that we would be happy to go around and get more funds for if it needs to be done. There was an update to the trolley proposal that we had previously presented to you guys. We presented it to the Village of Nelsonville, also to a bunch of different cultural institutions and the seniors from Chestnut Ridge. And we updated our proposal based on the commentary from everybody from the different village boards and all of those different organizations. And we brought a amended proposal to Phillips Town Board this past week. That proposal, as it would affect the village, we removed Lund Terrace stop right next to the visitor center, based on your request, that that was just not an appropriate place for the trolley stop. At the request of the seniors, we added back the bandstand, because they said the only stop that really mattered to them was getting down to the waterfront. So we added that back as per their request. But we will be sharing a final proposal with everybody shortly. And then today, we had a meeting about the C Street visitors and traffic, and how it affected business, how it affected the, the village, and most of the issues you guys are very familiar with. And we wanted to thank you guys for taking the effort to organize getting porta-potties and getting C Street to help pay for that. But the general consensus was that the business and village need to sort of address basic structural needs for like more bathrooms and more food outlets, because the restaurants are pretty much to max capacity during the weekends anyway. So having extra coming in just means there's not enough food for all the visitors during the slam time. So the business community will try and help address sort of how we can manage the food better, and also, I'm going to encourage all the businesses to open the bathrooms to the public at that time, and, you know, just try and help out in that area. And we may be working with Saint Mary's Church as well to help those, both of those issues. And then just to, you know, back that up with a little bit more, the Cold Spring Chamber of Commerce has been going to Putnam County a lot. We've been trying to sort of build relationships there. The new tourism director who came here, and the new director of the E.C. have become very friendly. They've been showing up to our meetings. They're trying to get their heads around what the issues of tourism are here for our community and what is needed. So we're happy to see them coming here, and we've certainly been going over there a lot to just kind of show that we're showing up to their end of things. And we feel confident that we are in a good position to advocate on behalf of Cold Spring. So if there are budgetary issues related to tourism management that need to be met, we would be happy to work with the Village of Cold Spring to make requests. And that's pretty much it.
Just one question. On the, on the Halloween parade, who, who is the organizer of that? Or is there none? Or, because I was at the, you know, both Larry and I were at the, at the lawn just waiting, and there was no, there was no organization. So I tried to get people to come down, and that didn't work. And then we put sirens on, and then Larry pushed people. So is there someone that's supposed to be in charge?
There, we, so there's a precedence. It was a bit of a hand-me-down, and since I'm a new president, I'm just learning about these things. But the main organizer would be Melissa Carlton at Houlihan Lawrence. She puts together the candy bags. I think she does a lot of the promotion efforts, but I'm not sure that, how she gets the parade started or anything like that. And the Chamber really only just kind of provides the insurance, and since Melissa is one of our members, she's a volunteer on our behalf managing it. But we don't have a whole lot of hands-on on it, so next year, we look to address that. And if there were issues around the management of the parade that need to be addressed, we would be happy to hear.
I just think, I think if somebody was there to say, okay, let's go.
Like blow my saw and send people down. Okay, noted. Any, any other questions? Nope. All right, thank you.
Thank you. You're up now, Matt.
All right, so we are still a little bit low in the reservoirs, just under seventy-eight percent from where we were last year. But the flow to the system did go down, about four and a half percent. Bacteriological tests all came back good. The yellow water that some residents have, may or may not have experienced, we've only gotten probably about ten actual calls and about that situation, but I do believe that we have a cause of it. Most of it stems from the rain event after the drought picked up additional sediment, so it was a little bit harder to treat with the coagulant and the chemicals used up in the water treatment plant. So the slight overdosing that would escape from the filters continued to try and do that and attracted the particles and discolor the water. So that's pretty much where we're at with that. There is analytical equipment that we could purchase that would help us detect that to prevent that from getting out to the distribution system, to keep the water clear year-round. It's around fifteen hundred dollars for that piece of analytical equipment. I believe it should be in the budget and would like to move forward with that. Pretty much three months in, and twice that we've had this happen. I think that would help us greatly achieve the, keeping the residents in clear water on that angle.
Does Michelle say it's covered in the budget?
I believe it is.
Okay.
But I'll talk to her tomorrow when she's in, and then we can go from there. Went over the reservoirs, the pressure-reducing valve, which also may have had a little bit of effect on the dirty water, discolored water that the residents have experienced, took place on the twenty-second after we had a high-pressure complaint coming from Rock Street. So during that event, we had to force water from opposite angles, causing the stirrup in there, which the coagulant attracted to and attributed to some of the discoloration as well. We did meet with the D.E.P. and Bart Clark on the seventh in regards to the connection to the aqueduct. Bart's going to, I believe he actually submitted them yesterday, the modifications that were discussed, but like he said that day, it doesn't discuss the water usage agreement. So that's been submitted, and we'll see where that goes from there. On the sewer side of things, I haven't heard anything really since the de-watering pilot study for the sludge has been conducted, but we do have Aeration Blower Two back in operations as of the fifth, the warranty did expire on two thousand seventeen, so we'll look on that. But we didn't, luckily, didn't need all the parts ever needed in that, so the bill should be a little bit less than previous to go.
On the sludge de-watering, who are you waiting on?
P&amp;D. We sent them data of like how much we're going to be wasting on a daily basis, and they were going to be crunching numbers to try and come up with a proposal for where to go with that next.
And you sent that a month ago?
And I have not talked to them since then.
This equipment that you're talking about, the fifteen hundred dollars, is that going to solve our problems for any?
I wouldn't say it's going to solve them a hundred percent, but it's definitely going to put us in the right ballpark, to be able to test for additional parameters that we can't test for now. So that'll lead us to know if there's any overdosing of the chemicals, so it's only going to help. And plus, it'll be redundant for the equipment that we have on there that's a little outdated, so we'll have backups if anything else does go down to it.
What's that? Before we go ahead, we should, do you want to go back to the Chamber of Commerce request for the Globe? They wanted to change the date from September Saturday, December fourteenth to Saturday December twenty-first. I'll make a motion to, to approve that.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Let's see, Building, Building Department, activity, new building permits, fourteen building permits issued, ten. Dumpster permits, one. C.O., six. Record searches, two, completed, that is. Complaints received, one. H.D.R.B. referral, seven. Z.B.A. referral, two. Fees, applications and permit fees collected, two thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars. Record searches, fees collected, a hundred and fifty, and other fees, thirty, for a total of twenty-two hundred and ninety-six dollars. Bugs, you're up. Haven't seen you in a while.
Evening, everyone. Congratulations, folks. Okay, for the month of October, we had sixty-one tons of garbage, eighteen point six-three tons of recycling. We cut down seven dead trees around the village, repaired sheet rock and painted the inside of the visitor center's bathrooms, finished patching up the holes in the wall that we can get in the subway. We repaired the safety issue on the guardrail on Maple Terrace. Soil and seeded a lot of low areas around sidewalks on parrot, pine, parsonage, and paling for the Halloween event. Clean gutters on Chestnut from the red light all the way to Oak Street, north and south sides. Cut back the saplings on Lund Terrace for complaints that people were having difficulty seeing what was coming over the bridge. Removed ten-foot section of side curb on Garden Street. Cleaned up storm debris on three different occasions and had three brush pickups. To continue with what Rec Department said, while P&amp;G was down fixing the sensors and outlets on the bandstand, I also had them jump on that bollard light out on the end. So that is all set. Nobody can get into it anymore. We brought the oh-three garbage truck to Corsi for some new front tires, ran a new electrical harness on the eighty-nine International Salter, tuned up all four backpack blowers, replaced PTO driveshaft and U joints in the eighty-nine International Salter, fabricated a new one-piece door for the leaf vacuum box, and installed a new battery and tune-up for the vacuum box motor.
That's all you did?
Excuse me?
That's all you did?
Took a week's vacation, too.
Bugs, thank you, guys, for, I call Bugsy all the time also, and he jumps on all these things that I ask, and puts cones up all the time, and then these things that take a lot of time, but I appreciate it. So thanks, thank you, guys.
Bugsy, we, I got a guy coming Saturday to waterproof those skylights. No more light will come through them, but no water either. So, and then we'll deal with the roof.
If we can get to the.
In due time.
That's fine, as long as we can get the lights fixed, because I'm only running on like half my lights down there.
You got a lot of fixtures, but they're not working, apparently.
They're not working, yeah, more than half of them aren't working. I didn't realize that that was going to be the solution to the roof.
It isn't a solution. It's a temporary fix, because the roof is very aged and the panels are falling apart, so we got this material you can roll on, and it, it will seal it to the weather, so it won't leak anymore.
I'll get in touch with the, the folks that visited down there and see what we can do.
Okay, I appreciate it.
But I didn't want to do anything until I understood what was going to be done about the, the roof. So now that that's.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you, folks.
Justice Court finds forfeited bail and civil penalties, sixty-five hundred and three dollars. Parking tickets, thirty-eight hundred and fifty dollars. Civil fees, three hundred. Mandatory state surcharges, three thousand three hundred, for a total of thirteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars. On the board? What's that?
Congratulations, guys. Good to have you here.
A couple of, where are we at with the doors? I think you were moving forward on that.
Well, that's in here. Do you want to talk about it now, or?
Okay, where is it in there?
Old business.
Well, it's in the old business. It's most of the way back through the packet, United Door.
Whenever you want it. We'll have to get talked about later.
Okay.
I guess, whenever.
Let's get there instead of jumping there.
Fran, anything?
Well, we'll talk about the streets project that Larry and I.
Well, we'll talk about the streets project that Larry and I have done in a few minutes, but Bugsy and I are also working on planning some announcements for recycling. We're hoping to present that at next month's meeting, at least a beginning of some flyers and announcements that we're going to make, so we'll have a step-by-step process of what we're thinking of doing for the recycling and how long it's going to take and just so people will start getting on board with what is involved in splitting up the recycling. So we're hoping to be able to present something at next month's meeting on that. Other than that, I had a conversation with Ralph Faloon about the grants, I forget the name of them, the grants for the fire company, that he's very interested in applying for some grants and they want to apply for everything. But in order to do that, we had to determine whether the grant should come from the fire company or from the village. And in order to figure that out, we had to determine if we had a Dun's number and a SAM number. The Dun's, I know is a Dun and Bradstreet, the SAM number, don't ask me, I forgot what it means, but between Michelle and Jeff and I, the village has those numbers, which means the grant applications have to come in the village's name, but the write-up for the grants and what they need and what they want, which is a very in-depth process, has to come from the fire company. So I just talked to Steve and then Steve and I are going to try to meet with Ralph and get that together so that we, you know, we explain to them what we need from them. If they want grant money or at least to apply for grant money, they're going to have to give us a very in-depth write-up so we can move forward. And from what I understand from these grants, these grant applications, once they're in, they're ongoing and they hold them until, you know, as year to year as the money is divvied out. So we'll go through that process, we'll get that started.
Anything on this side?
Yes. You've probably all seen that the town of Fultstown has added a new option to the community tower program, which is community solar. I was wondering whether or not the village had applied for that.
Whether we had applied?
Yes, 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 you have to sign up for it. Yes.
You should know that, whether we did or not.
I have no idea.
I didn't.
Okay. No, why, why do I do that? I wouldn't do that on my own.
I wouldn't do it on my own either.
I won't find out what we need to do other than to...
Where did you get that from?
You can as an individual, the village can opt in, sorry.
So...
You can as an individual, but also the village can opt in to that as a source of noble energy.
How do I opt in?
You have to go online to their website.
If the village wanted it, we should contact Jewel.
You can, yeah, Jewel, just contact them, that might be...
What's that?
Jewel's part of this.
That's what I mean. So if we, since they've been representing us, wouldn't they be the person?
Well, what it is, it's different, it's different from our CCA. Basically, it's like a whole separate part of the CCA where if you really want to make sure you're getting stuff, there's a very limited number of renewal, like truly solar energy and mainly solar energy from across the river, that they're trying to create a market in, that is voluntary beyond the CCA. So if you want to, if you want your power to come directly from one of these sources than, or it's this source, I think there's just one at this point, then you can, you can opt into that within the CCA. So you're not out of the CCA now, you're just into the solar provider instead of the...
And they're suggesting that you can save it, save up to ten percent, which is what attracted me.
Yeah, I like that, too.
Okay, I will, I will sign us up for that.
Thank you. What's that? So a number, I said, some of the things we mentioned already tonight. One, I went with Matt and we, and Bart Clark down to Valhalla and met with New York City DEP, once again to try to work on the connection, which looks hopeful as time since they're doing work at the aqueduct. So they're trying to put it, put it packaged all together for us there. So Bart's working on that. He has to, Bart's been there so many times, he wasn't as optimistic as I am, but anyway, they seem like they moved the goalposts a lot. But since they're working there, it seems like it's the time to do it and they seem to be on board with everything that we, that I talked to them about. So anyway, that was one thing. As I had mentioned, the foam support is being injected into the fire company that's going to happen on Wednesday, I mean on Thursday, they're going to start that. Should only take a couple of days. I guess they drill five-inch boards into, through the concrete to inject the foam. Hopefully, it'll, it'll stop it from settling for sure. Hopefully, and the reason why we're doing it is to also raise the center part that is sunk, so there's no guarantee on that. They feel confident that it'll do it, we'll see. The boiler project, like I said, we had to go back to bid because people were bidding on different equipment, so that's on hold. We're trying to move that forward. Again, that's taken months when it should have taken no time at all. That's going on. Garden Street, they're going to start paving tomorrow. Tomorrow, they're going to start milling and then paving and that should be done by the end of the week, so you won't be able to go down through Garden Street in the next couple of days. If someone's in on Garden Street or living on Garden Street and they need to get in or out, they'll definitely, they'll work with people on that. So it's not like it's impossible to get in there, but for the most part, the road's good. A meeting, I met with a number of people who are building inspector. We had sent, we went off the Putnam County list that we have to work with, so there were four people that had contacted us and interviewed Jeff and I. Unfortunately, a bunch of those problems with each one in a way. Some were, weren't interested in a full-time position or even a part-time position that was twenty hours. Some didn't have the experience. The person that did have the experience so that they could work it out with their job and that didn't happen. There is one person left who, you know, was actually one of the first picks and we interviewed and we think that'll work, so I'm interviewing him again tomorrow. Also be interviewing for a ZBA opening tomorrow also. That's what I have for the, for the week. So we will move along here, update on street signs.
Larry, you want to take this?
Not really.
I have sent the board, I'm sure, more spreadsheets than you really need to look at based on what Larry and I have done so far. We walked the village from the river to above Stone Street, trying to match what's in the code with what kind of street signs are actually out there. There are a number of issues where things just need to be corrected to match the code. There, there's signs that are not in the code that need to be taken down. There are missing stop signs, missing one-way signs and so on and so forth. There are a few places where wording on the code should just maybe be changed to make it clearer. And Marie had looked at this and sent back some comments. Some of the issues, for example, on Shred Street, it says it's one-way from Northern Avenue to Main Street, which is actually the entire length, so it basically should just say one-way the entire length. One of the, a few things that we need to sort of go through and discuss or make a decision on, one of the things that we noticed is that in the code, it says that Railroad Avenue is one-way. However, Railroad Avenue is not one-way as we use it now. There's no signs that say one-way. Traffic goes both ways on Railroad Avenue, so we need to determine either if we're going to make it one-way based on what the code says or change the code to leave it as a two-way street. Things like that have to be done. We have not done the entire village, so we stopped at about Stone. We will eventually, probably in the spring, work more and try to match this back and forth. At this point, we need to determine whether we want to ask the Highway Department to correct some of the signs that are missing or we want to wait until we finish the whole project. Some of the signs, like no parking signs, could be put up if we have them. We also need to determine as a village, and a lot of this is going to be open to public comment, whether streets that are, have no parking signs on them should be consistent throughout the village. Some streets are no parking four hours, some streets are no parking five hours. Some streets say eight to four, some streets say nine to five. Some signs actually say no parking except for holidays, which that is not at all in the code, so those signs have to come down. But before we start changing signs to match what's in the code, we need to determine whether or not we want to change the code so we don't drive the Highway Department totally insane. So let me see, there are a couple of other questions that I had that we should sort of look at. And Marie had made some comments, some of, some of the issues of what says in the code. The code, for example, says that Kimball's, okay. No, I guess this was, some of them were our issues. For example, it says Kimball Avenue, no turns at intersections or you can't, if you're traveling north, you can, it's prohibited to turn east and south. And whereas Marie pointed out, there's no turn from Kimball traveling north going south because that just means making a U-turn. So some of the code has to be cleared, which I'm sure the Code Update Committee has picked up on. One of the other things that...
The Code Update Committee did not do this kind of review of the, of that section. It just seemed beyond the ability to get it done in time for the public hearing.
Okay, so we will continue on with this. One of the other things, and it's, Marie and I had talked about this and I think I had talked to Bugsy about it, there are some red, some yellow X's on, in front of some areas in Depot Square, which don't belong there, they're not in the code. The question is, Depot Square is not a village road, so, you know, the yellow X's have marked off parking areas, there should be actually be parking, you know, how do we deal with that? So that's something for us to sort of figure out and I'm not sure how we would deal with that. Another issue is the code actually says, let me see if I can find it, in accordance with the provisions, in chapter one-twenty-six thirty-four, it says in accordance with the provisions of one-twenty-six-ten, the speed limit throughout the village shall be fifteen miles an hour, except at following speed limits. Now, one-twenty-six-ten does not say that, but one-twenty-six thirty-four says that, one-twenty-six-ten says that. So there are innuendos, so that's as far as we've gotten. I've given the board a list of things that I think we can correct now. We just need to make a determination as to how far we want to go without, without having to redo it if we make changes to it. So it's a start. We can take a look at it, we can discuss it after and then I was going to hand it off to Highway, to Bugsy in the Highway Department to determine how many, go Bugsy, to determine how many signs he has handy, how many signs we need to correct it. There are, there is a handicap parking sign on Stone Street that doesn't belong there, so that needs to come down. A few other issues that are going, you know, things that are not in the code that are. So that's as far as we've gotten with this. And then there are other suggestions, things that, as Larry and I went through, we would like to see done, is listed separately because we realized that anything that we'd like to see done requires a code change and that requires a public hearing. So we'll gather all of that together when this, you know, gets to the end and try to do a whole open, public hearing on all of that. So that's what we've gotten so far. Everybody has a copy of this, so feel free to send back comments. Thank you.
Do you have a picture copy, hard copy?
Sure. I do, I should, yeah, but here.
Thank you for...
You're welcome.
Whatever, just on that, I think the signs that without, that need to be, you know, replaced are, I think we should move ahead with that. I mean, I don't think it's going to cost any, make any difference later on, so if we can identify, that'd be good.
Okay, I'll see with Bugsy next week and we'll go through the list again.
Okay, next, authorize the mayor to sign? Yes?
I commend you for all the work, because I can imagine how much it is going back and forth between the two. But is there also not a parking committee? I can remember a discussion several years ago, because there's permitting parking on the south side of, I mean on the riverside, and the discussion about permit parking on this side of the, and it seems like nothing has been discussed about that and nothing's really happened with that. Is there a parking committee and is it something should we go in hand-in-hand with this?
Parking committee sort of has fizzled out in response to the permit parking on the, you know, east of the train tracks. And Marie and Dave can probably talk this better than I can, but that requires actually doing a whole survey of all of the areas and the streets that are listed on that, you know, that we were available to get permit parking for. It's got something to do with the fact that you have to count how many parking places are available, how many people need parking places. You have to have, I believe, X percentage of spaces available for residents and X percentage of spaces available for visitors. I think from as far as I've heard, we don't have the percentages that we need, so, you know. So having to give people who live in the village permits to park on the streets when we don't have enough spaces between the people who live here and the people who visit, according to what the state law is, we don't have the right percentage. And as far as numbers, I don't, we're even...
So it's not, I don't, I don't want to get into this right now because it's a huge can of worms that kind of fizzled out, or didn't fizzle out. It became more complicated. It wasn't like just simple. It wasn't like you would think everyone would want to do this or whatever. And then there were regulations like that, the percentage of it. But it's something we will start back up again. I think we ran out of energy from everything else, honestly, but I think it...
Sorry, your question about the work that Larry and Fran have done, in the most part, does not affect parking. It affects the signs. Right, the parking sign. It's making consistent. Well, there's the signs that are incomplete. So for example, Kimball Avenue, there should be two do-not-enter signs that are visible from Main Street. Oh, no, I, I understand that. I was more like the consistency about four-hour parking, five-hour parking, and that just brought to me the concept of resident parking.
And, and as it turns out, it doesn't matter. The number of hours that are or are not consistent on the streets has no influence on the implementation of the residential parking permits.
Yeah, that's fine. I just carry...
What needs to be done, if, if residential parking permits were implemented, is there would need to be signs that say, these are the parking hours for people without the permits. Because people with the permits can park there as long as they want.
Sorry, I brought it up, it was, it was pure ass. Made me stay.
Next, authorize the mayor to sign contract with Penflex for administration for Lo Sap.
It's something we do every year, but I haven't gone through it.
Does anyone have any more information on this? I know we do it every year, but we... We need to do this today?
It looks like it's from November first to December till October eighth, so it's... Hey, Dan, I don't know, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't...
I don't know, I can't...
Same here. You just need to sign it.
I know, is it, is this, what is it, are we paying more than nine fifty? Is that what we have them paying?
It says there's been zero change.
All right, first line there.
Okay, got it, okay. Let me do, let me do, somebody has to make the motion.
Make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the Penflex contract. A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh, next, let's see, this is the next step for updates in the village code.
I don't know what this is.
What's that?
I don't know what that is.
I was under the impression they were going to be some recommendations now on...
The Code Update Committee is on the agenda for December third...
Uh-huh, okay.
...to present their recommendations to the village board, at which point, so I'm answering your question, at which point it is totally incumbent upon the village board to carry this forward.
Right, but we need to have the information. And you're going to give those recommendations to us and we will act on those.
Sorry, all the recommendations are on the village website.
We don't get those personally?
It's five hundred pages and you don't.
Okay, well, it doesn't seem, it seems about average for the respect I get sometimes, but...
I've got most unprinted, David. I use my own paper, don't worry.
Maybe you get it where you gotta be, the president, yeah.
So the question is that I think the Code, after the Code Update Committee makes their...
But the recommendations on the website aren't for how to move forward, the recommendations for the changes in the, in the code. Right, so I was thinking you were, is anyone going to make recommendations or we're going to look at that and we're going to make the recommendations ourselves?
As to how to, so it would seem to me that you need to read the documents.
Again?
Some of you read the documents before.
Yes, I'll read it. That's another problem. I'm not interested in that, I'm interested in that, but not at this point. I just want that, this is on here, it was...
I have no idea what's on the agenda.
Okay. I would think that the... I would think that the, knowing the timeline and the amount of time you've put into it, that you would have a recommendation on how to move forward.
Yeah.
And that wouldn't come from me being, you know, reading what the codes are.
So, what my recommendation would be, is for the board to read through the recommended changes to each of the chapters, and for any chapter, and there is a summary of what the changes are to each chapter. The chapters are all out on the village website in redlining form, so you can look at it and see exactly what the changes are. If there's anything in there that the board disagrees with, or thinks needs to be changed, then the board needs to identify that.
Okay.
And then, once you've read through it, and you've identified your agreement or disagreement, we'll work through those, those issues.
So you're on the agenda for December third?
The code update committee on December third will present to the village board the recommended changes to the village board.
Get it around the website, or...
Get it around the website.
What about the feedback you got from the meetings, is that, is that something you're gonna add, like we talked on the third one?
So, we've, we've gotten one letter and two emails, so, for example, one of the emails suggested that we rezone the area, what's the river name tracks, from I-1, which is what it is now, to MU-1. As it turns out, twenty years ago, it was rezoned from, it was rezoned to I-1, where, while many of the residents recommended that it become B-1, the issue was that B-1 would permit multi-family housing, so there was concern, as best I can read into the issue, the concern was that the lumber company property would become apartments, and so it was not rezoned to B-1, it was rezoned to I-1.
And they became apartments anyway.
Pardon me?
They became apartments anyway.
They became thirteen townhouses, as opposed to however many apartments might have been there.
A lot.
And I-1 was appropriate twenty plus years ago, the oil dock was still there, the coal company was there, the lumberyard was there, there was another industry down there, oh, the lumberyard was both the lumberyard and the trust manufacturing, so I-1 made sense. I don't think any one makes sense, the code update committee believes that I-1, or maybe B-1, or R-1 would be appropriate. That is something that the village board needs to think about, as well as changes to the setbacks that are identified, for example, for MU-1 and for PR-1. Do those things make sense to you? So those are the kinds of issues that I think the village board needs to take up. If we change, if we change, this is not, if we change from entire length, sorry, from Main Street to Mountain Avenue to be entirely, just assume that that's gonna happen correctly, but the more meaty topics that you need to look at, that the village board needs to look at, are those kinds of topics, rezone you. Thank you.
Okay, everyone digested that, or maybe we some time. Okay, next thing's, accept resignation of Grace Low from zoning board of appeals. I have a letter from Grace, I am writing to formulate my decision to resign from the zoning board of appeals. It's been a pleasure getting to know you all and the locals that I've met through my time on the board, and I look forward to contributing to this lovely village in some other capacity in the near future. Thanks, Grace.
Thank you, Grace, for your time.
Aaron, how long, was she on the board?
It was around a year, under a year.
Thank you for your service, Grace, for watching.
So, you're gonna be watching, so...
Yes, make a motion to accept the resignation of Grace Low from ZVA.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Do you have candidates, Aaron?
I'm interviewing one tomorrow, it's the, it's the mayor's appointment for our code.
With agreement from the village board?
Yeah.
Okay, because I have a candidate as well, but if you're talking about something tomorrow...
Why don't you send them along?
I don't have them lined up.
What's that?
I don't have them lined up for tomorrow.
Well, it doesn't have to be tomorrow. Let me know, or put it on the website, and I'll, I'll go and look for it.
Well, put it on the website, that's a great idea, in redlining.
Okay, requests for parade, parade correspondents here, do we have someone here from Earth Day?
I'm Crystal Ford, if you don't know me, I'm the one who organized the climate strike on September twentieth on the lawn of St. Mary's. If you're not aware, next year is fifty years since the first Earth Day, and I thought, since we are in this wonderful, beautiful village town with the Hudson River, we could have a festive celebration of clean air, clean water, make it fun. The idea would to actually have it on Earth Day, which is a Wednesday, and have it after school, when school lets out, so that the students, kids can all participate, maybe even like make their own costumes, whatnot, and then have it so that the hours don't interfere too much with traffic. It's a Wednesday, you know, if the parade started at four, everything's finished by five, it would follow the same route as the Halloween, so it ended, would end at the bandstand, and then everyone would be gone before people start coming off the train. So it'd be probably minimal disruption to village life, and might actually be a little bit of a fun thing on a Wednesday in the middle of the week. I'm trying to see if the Chamber of Commerce is supportive of the idea, I've started talking to them, so I'm waiting to hear, like, you know, what they think of it, obviously I want to hear what you think about it, what your questions, concerns would be, and, but, yeah, my, yeah, so that's the, that's the gist of it.
You really think you're gonna have, excuse me, you really think you're gonna have five hundred people?
I had two hundred people on the lawn of St. Mary's.
Because four o'clock in the afternoon is a commuter twenty.
Is it four, is when the commuters start?
You'll have some, you'll have cars racing down to pick people up, if you have five hundred people on Main Street. You know, with an advance notice, people have to know to walk out, I don't know how it's gonna work, you know. That's just a...
Okay.
So, I mean, Larry, you would probably know better.
What, April, are you looking to do it?
It's April twenty-second.
To Wednesday?
To Wednesday. My suggestion would be, since it's not big on tourist season at that point, I know it's, you kinda wanna do it on that day, if you can push it to a weekend.
Yeah, I was like, weekend probably would be bad, right?
I think the weekend on April would be a little better, if it's gonna be four, if you wanted four o'clock at the school, and with the, with the people coming and going and picking up passengers of the train, the weekend could be a little bit lighter if you did it, say, you know, nine o'clock in the morning, something a little earlier, and get it done by ten, this way it's not really, usually the people won't come in until eleven, twelve o'clock. Just a suggestion, nothing definite, I mean...
I'm open to the parade, I just, we need to have a little more information, and you need to pay for police, it's the only thing that basically would be the cost, so, if you can get the chamber on board, or whoever, I think, you know, we can approve it tonight, but you can, you need some more information, I'm open to that, I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Yeah, I think, yeah, so I didn't realize, I didn't realize people started picking up at four, I would've thought it would start like at five-thirty, six o'clock.
I don't know how many people get picked up at four.
'Cause I was gonna say you leave work at two, which, I want your job.
I'm sorry, I may get over till eight, so, no, you don't want my job at all.
I'd be surprised how busy Main Street is, you know, from three to six o'clock in the afternoon, I mean...
Quite a bit going on.
Come down a couple Wednesdays, and just sort of fill it out, because, I mean, that was down there, like, you know, Election Day, watching people get off the train, and that...
Yeah.
But, you know, if you come down and you fill it out, you may see that it starts...
Yeah, well, so I, I will come back with more information, but, yeah, this is the initial conversation.
Good, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Putnam Pride.
Hi, I'm Irene Zermatt, this is...
I'm Mike Schmitz.
So we would, sorry?
Thanks for enduring me.
Yeah, no, 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 it sounds like you have a lot of interest in parades lately, so, so we would like to request permission for a pride parade, June, the first thing I'm noticing is that you actually, I think I might've given you the wrong date, we were thinking of June sixth, the Saturday, we've sort of, we've talked to all of the other, Putnam County is the only county in the Lower Hudson Valley that doesn't have a pride event, a public pride event, there are some, like, local or, you know, school things, school events, but there's no big public, no town has a public parade, so, you know, Cold Spring is honestly the most accessible, the most welcoming town, and so that's why we are requesting permission from you guys. So, I mean, June sixth is our tentative date, we've checked with all the other county pride events that are happening, and that's a date that's free, there doesn't conflict with any other big, you know, there's Duchess Pride now...
Yonkers, White Plains, Rockland...
Yeah, I think West, I think the one has one the next day, June seventh, but, I mean, that's a date that seemed, you know, doable, we're open to other dates, but, you know, I don't think we're absolutely committed to that date or anything, but we just wanted to get your thoughts on the event in general, and, I mean, we have, we have a lot of people interested, we have a group of about two hundred and sixty people who are on board for it, we just tried to like sort of gather initial momentum for it with a Facebook group, we have sort of tentatively expressed interest from, I mean, I haven't done any real outreach because obviously we don't have approval for it yet, so, but we have, you know, local politicians and things on board, tentatively, Randy Fork expressed interest in it and stuff, and so I'm hoping that, you know, we'll get a lot of people interested, and help, and we need help planning it, Michael's on the board of the Hudson Valley Civil Democrats, and they're interested in helping potentially, so, you know, I think we have a lot of support behind it, it's just a matter of getting something, a date approved, so that we can start the actual work and outreach.
You realize, I think, Jeff said he had spoken to you, that you talked in your email about ending at Dockside, maybe getting vendors in there, and that's a whole type, separate application?
Yeah, and I mean, that's like, I, I don't know, it's, if there's a ton of interest in it, and it gets to the point where businesses would like to sponsor and do, I mean, it would be great to have a big party with vendors, I know that there's a lot that goes into it, we've even talked about potentially, you know, forming a nonprofit in order to do this, but that's obviously a lot of work, we're open, you know, this is, if, in the first year, if we just have a walk down the street and end in the park, and then sort of, you know, go to the local bars nearby, that's fine with me, too, so, it's just a matter of, you know, how much interest and support we get, I think, once we start doing the actual outreach, but, I don't know, I mean, obviously we would be interested in asking the Chamber to help as well, if that's possible, and, you know, see, see how things go, but we definitely, you know, just would like to get the process started soon, 'cause we spoke with, we spoke pretty extensively with like the Duchess Pride organizer, and, you know, she said, she told us what went into the planning there, and that was the, she did it the first year last year, so, you know, we have a little bit of background from her, and we know a lot of...
Not just Duchess, we've, I'm close friends, and I volunteer with people who have been organizing White Plains Pride, Yonkers Pride, Rockland Pride, so we have direct networks who can help us make it a successful event.
And what do we, what's included in the parade, or what do we?
Well, I mean, you know, some of that depends on what, you said you guys don't have, like, I mean, we would definitely want to have music of some sort, I think, so we would have to figure out, like, speakers, people, I'm, I'm hoping that different groups will march, you know, will walk with banners, and there will be music beyond that, we would probably want to get, like, speakers and a microphone, so like somebody, it really kind of depends on who comes on board with it, and, you know, if we want to have somebody give a speech to start the parade off, to end the parade, so, I mean, but that's ideally what I, I'm envisioning is, you know, people, I don't think that we're gonna have, like, floats or anything like that, but...
We can dream.
Yeah, but we're thinking of, you know, starting from Morris Avenue down Main Street, ending at the park, and I don't know exactly, you had asked me a bunch of questions, which, you know, I have answers to, but I don't really know how long that route takes to walk, but with, and it would depend on the number of people, it could be anywhere right now, from like two hundred to five hundred, I think, it really...
Yeah.
What time of the day we think they do it?
Like afternoon, like early afternoon, one to three, I don't know how long that route will take, but a couple of hours, and then end in the park, and, you know, if we don't have vendors, just sort of end there, maybe do, we will, I, I mean, I know some local musicians that are already interested in, you know, possibly performing, so, that would be...
You could perform.
Yes, please. But I know you don't have a stage, so we would have to...
We have a bandstand.
You have a bandstand?
Right at the roof.
Okay.
To the bottom of the parade booth.
Okay, I'm from Brewster, so I don't...
Yeah, we'll watch this.
So what you're trying to do is reserve a date right now, and then once you have the date, you'll start...
Right.
...folding in other events and participants, and at some point you might come back and say you'd like to use Dockside, or as post-parade, speeches, music, whatever.
Yeah, that's basically it, I mean, because, once we have a date, then we can start actually contacting people and saying, it's gonna be this date, are you interested, and then see how it goes.
There are other groups in Putnam that will definitely help them, like Putnam Progressives.
Yeah.
Definitely help.
It's just a little hard to think of approval, we really don't know the scope of everything, and I know you can move forward and find that out for us, till we give you approval, so...
I mean, what I always like to point out is that Main Street is the way to get to the train, you know, so putting five hundred people on Main Street and thinking you're gonna be there for like a couple of hours is probably not gonna be...
No, I guess you didn't understand how long it takes.
Talking about half an hour.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure how long that takes, but, well, where, where, like, if we're starting on Morris Avenue, is that where the train is?
Hell, it's up the hill.
So...
Where the traffic light is...
We would only be in front of the train for a certain amount of time, like...
That's the only access to the train.
You wouldn't even be near the train, you'd be, you're going over, you'll go over the train tracks, and then take a right and head toward the bandstand, or potentially into Dockside.
Right.
And as soon as you need, you can let us know whether or not you need Dockside, because we book weddings there also.
I mean...
I definitely think that we would need Dockside.
We would need at least to, we would probably want to end and do something there, it might not be vendors, you know, but we would probably want to get a permit to at least, at least do something there.
Do you understand the difference between Dockside and Riverside Park? Have you been down there?
Yes, yeah.
So what do you consider Dockside?
The, the gazebo.
No, okay.
No?
Keep going further.
Keep going right there.
Keep going further north, it's on the river.
Yeah.
It's an open space, it's a park.
Right.
So you could have a stage there, you could have music there, speakers there...
We have our Fourth of July celebration there, it's a pretty large area.
Okay, well, that sounds better.
You probably need to sort of walk your route and get a feel for it, you know, but if you want us to, you know...
Are you, like, the, I think, the, how long does it take to Halloween parade?
Start, start from St. Mary's down, I think it took twenty minutes.
That's a lot, and that's a thousand people or more.
Yeah, it was, I think it was maybe three to five hundred.
Oh, really? Okay. Okay, so then...
So then, where it terminates, if you ended at the riverfront, there's the bandstand there, which, then there's side parks you can use, and then there's the dock, which is, you know, facing the bandstand, which is an open area, so something could happen there, if you needed more, or you want to set something else special, then you'd have to go to Dockside, which, you just go, head north, then you'll run it into it, and that's, like everyone said, it's an open space.
It's all connected.
So you should really take a look, see what need, and then we can let you know what costs are for stuffs, 'cause I'm sure that'll influence your...
Yeah, well, Jeff sent me the Dockside Park information, but so Riverside is different.
There's no Riverside, there's no Riverside.
Well, there's, if you wanted to use the gazebo, I think there's a seat for that, but it's minimal.
Bandstand, bandstand.
Bandstand. Bandstand, gazebo.
And that's where, like, the Chamber of Commerce has their concerts, they have it at the bandstand, so what is it?
Is that, I mean, should we contact the Chamber of Com- Commerce separately? No, okay.
You should walk the, do, walk the.
I have, we have.
Okay, so there's the, um, bandstand, the dock, and two small parks, and then there's Dockside, further north, moving space. So, I, I guess you want to, uh, determine how much time you want for the Main Street parade, and then where do you wanna end up? At, at the bandstand or Dockside?
Right, okay.
Or you could end the parade at the, at the bandstand and then go to Dockside.
Yeah, that's probably what you would really do.
But you should really determine that and make sure that fits in some type of a budget, um.
Ruth Ann, do you know if there's anything, uh, reserved down there for weddings yet?
No.
I know we've looked at a couple, like in the future, but can't remember when.
We have one application for that.
The other cost would be the, is the police, that's, uh, just for the parade itself, there's, uh, overtime, or whatever, whatever the cost is for however many police we have. If you have five hundred.
Right.
We'll leave that to Larry, he will decide.
Right.
And I think what is the minimum, if someone comes in, it's three or four hours, three hours, four hours?
Minimum's three hours.
Three hours.
Thirty dollars an hour.
I think it's thirty-eight.
Okay. For how many officers?
How many do you think you need?
Well, it depends how big it is, um, we're talking about closing off side streets, uh, if you have five hundred people, it takes a little bit, you know, for it to get them past. Not everybody's gonna wanna run down, you know, not for them to run, but rapidly go down, they wanna actually enjoy the walking down. Uh, it all depends how many people. Um, if it's gonna be a hundred people, you know, it could be two, three officers, if it's gonna be five hundred people to eight hundred, I would definitely want, especially if you're gonna have a, a, an event down at Dockside, to provide security for that, um, that could be a whole other range. But the minimum for a parade, uh, to close off certain blocks, stuff like that, I'd have to say, uh, at least, uh, four officers, that's minimum. Now, if it goes five, six, seven hundred people, then it goes up, you know, always have to be more.
Okay.
And I heard, it's, it's possible to get the liability insurance through the Chamber of Commerce, or no?
No, they have, they provide this for the Halloween parade, but you have to get your own for.
We would have to have our own.
Whoever your insurance.
Okay.
I think that's, it's fairly easy to get.
Right, yeah, okay.
It's not expensive for an event.
Okay. All right, well, so.
Any other questions, or what is the next step that you need from us?
Yeah, like what additional information do you need us to come back with so that you can approve June sixth?
If you could get a little more specific about what, you know, where, what the route is, and I, I guess there's no way to tell how many people are.
I mean.
Or you can do.
We're gonna aim high.
We can start doing the actual outreach, it's just a matter of, you know, I just don't want that date to go away, and then, um.
Well, the Recreation Commission is meeting on Tuesday, and we can pencil in the bandstand for that day, so that, you know, no matter what, the bandstand, you can't have another event at the bandstand if you have all those people down there anyway, so we'll just pencil that in, so the bandstands are available.
Okay.
If you do go forward and, you know.
Right, that would be great, um.
And then if you do, then there would be an application to use the bandstand, and we have all the at the office for you to get.
Okay.
And a different application for parade?
We don't have one, we, seems like we need to get one.
Seems like every time we turn around, there's a parade.
Does anyone have objections to it, or can we tentatively set the sixth and?
It's tentatively set.
I'm happy with that.
Tentatively set it, I mean.
Perfect, thank you. Um, so we'll come back to you with, um, more information, I mean, now I now start getting some of the bigger needs that we are hoping will help support us on board, and if we can start, you know, getting more of the word out, then I can give you a better idea of, you know, how many people we might anticipate. I mean, if everybody in that Facebook group came and brought somebody, it would be close to five hundred people already, so. But, I don't know, I can't say that for sure, I don't know if they're all gonna come, but.
Yeah, as soon as you can get us whether or not you need Dockside, or whether, you know, what other additional things you're gonna want, the better.
Larry, how, uh, how, in far in advance do you need to know to get people?
Uh, I'd say at least, uh, if you, if you're expecting over five hundred, I'd say I'd need at least, uh, the minimum will be probably four months in advance.
Okay.
And I'd have to cap, I'd have to cap out a certain amount of people. I mean, you're getting five hundred now, all of a sudden you're telling me eight, nine, I can't get that many. I have, I have to have a cap on a certain amount, I don't know that right now, um, for the parade, because the longer you have, the longer it's gonna take. Um, it's gonna cause a lot, a lot, you know, issues with that, it's a massive parade. I'm glad you said there'd be no floats, because I'd, I'd say no right away for that. Um, reasoning being, if there's a incident, we have one main road in and out, the firehouse is right there, and we had, like, fixtures where you couldn't move them out, out of the main, uh, roadway, we need to get a fire truck somewhere, that's a no-go for me, um, you know, we can work out those as it gets, as it gets closer, and stuff like that.
All right.
And you should ask them the cost, can you center the cost of the, Jeff, what you're saying?
What's that?
Cost of the bandstand.
Uh, yeah, I think I have all the information for cost for the parks, but, um, in terms of, well, the liability insurance, that would be us, and then the police.
So we would just have to cover thirty-eight an hour?
Cover three and out, minimum.
Yeah.
Per officer.
Okay.
Is there a permit fee for the parade itself?
Oh, yeah.
We, that's what you still have to.
After our two go through.
There's a permit for the bandstands, although we can.
And also, just a note for you for more, more information, if you do have a certain amount of people and there's gonna be in Dockside, you have to have a ambulance, uh, down there, so that's another fee. That's a, a P, a P back that we have, it's a volunteer, but if we have events, they actually charge fee events, like we have at the Wine Fest that we've had, and Mares Park where they've had four, five, six hundred people, that's actually, I think, by state law, you'd have to look at something like that, um, that's a separate entity. I'm just giving you more, just to let you know what it entails. The more people, this is the more that you're gonna have to have.
Okay.
Rain date for this?
That's what it's just gonna be.
Is it rain or shine?
Um, I was thinking we should have a backup date, I don't think. We're gonna do it in the rain?
I don't know, we might melt.
We might melt. I mean, I don't know.
If it's June.
I say rain or shine.
So you, you know, just let us know.
Okay, we'll think about that too.
Yeah. Okay, all right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. If you wanna help, please, you can ask for it. We'll need it, thank you.
Sure, yes, absolutely.
Okay, uh, let's see, I didn't read this one, this, um. Commercial vehicles, did anyone read that, or is that even? Okay, this is a letter comes from Patrick Beesmans, uh, for our conversation, I'm emailing you to voice my concerns about semi-trailer trucks and commercial vehicles continually getting stuck on railroad, oh, okay, this is railroad, I can, uh, railroad, uh, between Depot Square and Stone Street. In four years, I've, being a resident of five railroad avenue, I witnessed a numerous semi-trailer trucks and commercial buses get stuck on the narrow street and occasionally rip down low, hanging wires and telephone poles. I have done my best to aid the drivers as it happens, but I fear with the growing popularity of our town in commerce, it's only a matter of time before something disastrous happens involving these vehicles navigating these small streets. I have taken photos of a few instances, if, in any way that helps highlight the severity of the situation, please let me know how I can further assist.
Is this falling to the sign thing, where we might really need a sign saying no trucks?
I think we need, we need to determine, that would have to be a code issue, there is a section of the code that talks about streets that don't allow trucks. If we wanna say that railroad does not allow trucks, then we have to figure out how trucks are gonna get out of there once they turn onto Depot. Because if they can't go on railroad, we're gonna have to back around and that's, so, so that's, it is a code thing, and it would fall into the sign situation. We have to determine whether or not railroad's gonna be one-way or two-ways, if it's gonna be one-way, which way, uh, and if we decide there's no trucks there, or no buses, then we have to figure out how, once they get to Depot Square, they're gonna get out of there. Either that, or the sign has to be on Main Street saying, you're stuck. The only way out would be around one terrace and make, you know, make the loop and then come back.
Similar to the situation with the Grand Union, you might.
Grand Union, yes, yeah.
I, I live there, and I can attest to this. We oftentimes will have a tractor trailer stuck on railroad avenue, and we, the residents, have to go around and knock on people's doors to get the cars to move off of Stone Street temporarily, so the tractor trailers can come around. I mean, they're literally stuck.
So the truck, the trucks are coming up or down?
They're coming up or down to make that.
Oh.
They think they're gonna go up towards Stone Street.
Right. Yes, and they are.
And go left, I guess.
Yes.
I mean, this happened a week ago.
Yeah. What does GPS do? What is the GPS?
I don't know what the GPS does, but they're big trucks.
But, there's no room there.
In part, the problem is the GPS routes that are directing, uh, these.
Well, they couldn't go, they couldn't go right at all, right would be worse.
Sorry, sorry, the problem is that the GPS is telling them this is the way to go, and they follow it, they go down Depot, they go up railroad, and then they get stuck. GPS, whoever is doing the GPS, and I don't know who that is, but there's gotta be some organization that directs trucks in a certain, up a certain route, and, and that shouldn't be one of them.
So we need, we need to.
Instinctually, if I was on this street, I would go up that road.
Yeah, you would, and that, so either the sign coming on Main has to be similar with Maurice says.
That's why you're not a truck driver.
To behind Grand Union, you know, the sign that says you're coming in this way, you know.
You gotta back out.
My thinking is we have to put a sign on Main Street that says tractor trailers have to go on one, go around by the village, go around and, and come back. There's no other way.
Are they going to the depot?
I think they were, they pull in to drop stuff off at the depot.
That's what I was gonna say, and they're already in the street.
This last one, a week ago.
Yeah, but they say tourist buses.
Had no local delivery at all, it was like lumber, and he was a, a fully loaded, extra, I mean, maybe even been extra long, but it was at least a fifty-three foot trailer.
Just lost or something.
And, uh, one of the police officers, um, he tried, he wanted to turn onto railroad, but he was gonna take down a bunch of wires if he did that. Uh, one of the police officers was able to direct him to back up into Lund. He wasn't actually that good at backing, so it took a little bit. He backed up onto Lund, and then was able to go east on Main.
Yeah, so we need, we need to determine, uh, how the sign that determines.
When it happens, it's bad. Yeah, no, I mean.
Well, you need like a no outlet sign, or?
Yeah, no way, if you're a truck or a bus, you can't come down here, you know.
Don't say no outlet.
Well, for vehicles over a certain size, you gotta put the weight on there.
Okay.
It will add to our list.
Yeah, it just, it's, it's not as bad as that.
Hundred thousand dollar fine.
Yeah, got me a middle to. Merciful.
Sorry, I read that. Request to use the Dockside Park for wedding, October seventeenth, two thousand twenty, Marquitos Estacova.
From Dallas, Texas, you go, nice. Yeah, this is just a ceremony, right? You want, it's just a ceremony?
Four to five.
Uh, there's, uh, I saw something about caterers, I thought they did.
I don't think so. Wedding ceremony, four to five.
What kind of animals?
Animals?
That is the question, how many animals?
Maybe a problem with this.
One night season.
Why do we see this, right?
What's that?
Why, why does the village want to see?
Nope, ceremony only.
Because we started it, so we just said that, we can, we can move that direct, but.
Dockside's not under wreck, yes.
We put everything together, I just. I mean, if they're willing to take over, uh, there's a lot of stuff that goes on, and I'd need somebody to go down there and somebody to put up, uh, do the things that I do, that nobody's doing.
No, sorry, this is just permission to, to have the event.
Right.
Not stay.
Well, we can discuss for now, we'll, we'll keep it, and then if you guys wanna entertain taking over Dockside.
So you're gonna make a motion to approve it?
I was going to.
Go for it.
Somebody else want to? I just had right this second, my brain's dead.
I make a motion to approve the request for Dockside Park for a wedding on October seventeenth, twenty twenty.
I'll second it.
On favor? Now, that was difficult, wasn't it? Took us so much of our time. Okay, where are we going?
We have to go to the Penn State before the day's over.
No, yeah, sure. I request, uh, old business resident parking, uh, municipal parking lot. Um, I sent stuff, um, for all those that don't know, Jeff has pneumonia and, uh, left early today, and, uh, so some stuff is not in here. I sent them everything I had, is it in here?
Yeah, it's in here.
Look on the other direction.
The back of the, uh.
On the back of yours, mine's got a long page, so we're not back in there.
No, it's, it's.
Back of the wedding.
Here, look at that.
Anyway, I am really fried.
Okay. Very long day.
What's that?
Very long day.
Yeah. Anyway, um, so, do you wanna go over that?
So, uh, the village is proposing to permit, um, twenty-four hour a day, seven day a week parking at municipal lot from December first, two thousand nineteen, to April fifteenth, twenty twenty, and the fee would be, or, fee would be forty dollars. Rules, the applicant must be a re, must be a resident of the village. The applicant must provide a copy of their license and vehicle registration along with the application. The vehicle registration and license must match the name and address of the applicant. Only one permit will be allowed per address. A sticker will be issued to the permitee and must be displayed clearly in the rear driver's side window at all times. All numbered spaces in the lot are available, except for lot, space number one thirty-eight, which is the handicap space. For purposes of no removal, when all street parking rules are in effect, the permit holder must remove their vehicle from the lot from ten AM until snow is removed from the lot. As with all residents, it is incumbent upon the permit holder to call eight four five seven four seven seven six six nine to con, confirm whether all street parking laws are in effect. The village of Kalspring will not be responsible for any loss or damage caused by vandalism, snow removal, or any other issues while car is in the municipal lot. For the permit period, December first, two thousand nineteen, to April fifteenth, twenty twenty, the application must be received by one PM on November twenty-sixth. A refundable check in the amount of forty dollars must accompany all applications. Qualing, qualifying applications will be entered into a permit lottery. Applicants will receive a permit, application number to be used in the permit lottery. Nineteen lottery winners will be chosen at three PM on November twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen. If fewer than twenty applications are received, all applications will be approved. Once permitted, any violation of the above will result in the vehicle being ticketed and possible revocation of the permit. If on a rare occasion, vehicles must be removed from the municipal parking lot, permit holder will be notified by email only. Please be sure the email provided on the application is current and accurate, and then there is a parking permit application, which must be submitted. And I believe that the advertisement about this.
Yes, in the papers.
In the papers.
I think it is, yes.
Okay.
All right, I'll get it on Facebook, I will try to see if I can remember how Jeff told me to get stuff on the village website, if not, I'll bug him. I'll get it on Facebook anyway.
So the ads are in the paper, hopefully, I think he got the Doug in time, definitely the Highlands are current. And, uh, and the permit stickers are made, so they're ready to go, just have to put numbers on them. Anyone interested in parking for the winter and twenty-four seven down at the municipal lot, can fill out an application.
Can I ask, can I have a question? Cause it says here one permit per, per residence, or what about multi-families? Would it be considered separate residence?
What do you mean?
A permit per, per address is what it says.
It says per address.
Uh, so if it's a two-family house?
Uh, I guess we didn't.
Well, if it's a two-family house, doesn't the regi, uh, doesn't the address usually indicate apartment A or apartment B?
And, and in fact, the application indicates to provide the.
I see that, that's why I'm asking, because it says apartment.
We probably.
That's why.
Shouldn't word it differently, but.
I'm sorry.
We'll, we'll.
Sir, apartment number, I think, should be sufficient.
Okay, just clarify.
Yeah.
I'll be pulling mine out right away.
Update Steve Doors Watered Raisman.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Doors, our roll-up doors. Not a lot of people make the doors that we need for the, uh, treatment plant, uh, buildings. Uh, buildings, so the only guy that I could find around, or only company is United Door, out of Yonkers. And uh, they have, they have two options, they have the door that, which is manually raised with a chain. And for two of those installed is nine thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars. And if you wanted to go with the electric motor option and keypad, that would add three thousand five hundred fifty dollars to the nine thousand that's there. I can't do in my head, but. Quite a bit more.
So thirty-five hundred is additional, right?
That would be additional for everything electric booked up.
So it'd be over twelve thousand seven hundred.
If you do it electric, otherwise it's ninety-one per door.
Hey, let's go, let's go with basic.
These guys are, you know, they're strong.
Exactly, my feelings.
Get a little fresh air, get out of the truck and open the door.
Actually, it's eighty-four hundred because he's adding tax, which we don't pay, so it's eighty-four seventy-eight.
Is this in our um, budget, does anyone know?
That I do not know.
I'll follow up with Michelle tomorrow.
But uh, anyway, they got a pretty quick turnaround on it as well, so if we uh.
So I'll make a motion to uh, to approve this uh, proposal, um, if indeed, you know.
If it's in the budget.
If it's budgeted for.
Okay, well, just to also mention one more thing, a regular, the overhead doors that, that we wanted to put in there, it's like a thousand dollars cheaper, that's all. So these actually aren't that.
Wow.
Aren't that much more.
And are these painted or steel or is it?
They're galvanized, I believe, is what we, yeah, galvanized angle die, galvanized panel, I think. Yep, flat galvanized slats and, and locks, whatever, it's galvanized metal, which can be painted, or you can just leave it.
So I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll lead the first motion.
I, I made the motion. Uh, approval of bills.
Okay, I move to approve, uh, bill batch number fifty-three forty-eight for a total amount of sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-three cents.
I will second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Uh, approval of minutes ten fifteen nineteen, uh, trustee's workshop meeting, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Who seconded?
I did, hurry.
Any uh, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, approval of minutes, uh, October twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, trustee workshop meeting, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye. Public comment.
Public comment, what happened, the public ran away.
Uh, one thing Fran wanted to mention, our Fourth of July, being on the Fourth of July and on a Saturday. Coincidentally, got a letter from Legion today asking, or not, not any, or got an email from Legion Fireworks saying, sign up quick. Anyway, go ahead.
Fourth of July is on a Saturday, Jeff asked me to just mention it because we should lock in fireworks if we wanna do it, um, so I mentioned it to Dave. My thoughts were, um, you know, just do it on the Saturday with a, with a, probably a rain date for Sunday. I also mentioned to Dave that I'm glad the public's gone, no, no, um, if we don't do a parade and just have like a, you know, Village Independence Day. Party event down at the river from say maybe three until whatever, with food and games and, and music and fireworks and stuff, you're staying, huh?
At all.
Uh, anyway, Jeff had asked me to just mention so that we could get a date if we want to and lock in the fireworks, in front of what else does.
I have to, I'll reach out to the, to our, the usual.
Okay.
Haley Phillips Town will pay for it, cause they're using our village for their office now, I think.
So July fourth is a Saturday?
What's that?
July fourth is a Saturday, we wanna make the motion to lock that in for July fourth?
I don't know, you'll lock in before we have any money, we need a commitment of money.
Well, we can still have the event without fireworks.
Yes.
Could be a little boring.
We can actually have it on the Fourth this year.
You can have a, yeah.
That'd be exciting.
Well, let's go ahead and move it to bounce to you.
We'll get the money.
Yeah, so we don't have to do that.
Okay.
I'll, I'll contact. Kim, ask.
Okay, so make a motion to adjourn. I make, I make a motion to adjourn?
Lynn has the second, all in favor?
Aye.
From six o'clock.
Don't ever do this again.